And at this time, I'll call the June 11, 2013, meeting of the Acton School Committee to order. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
I have a question. I have, my question is, do we want to do this under the superintendent's report, or would you prefer to do it in executive session? I have a recommendation ready for you on the retirement incentive. And would you like to do that under the superintendent's report? Or would you prefer a very brief, very brief executive session at the end?
Maybe we ought to do an executive session.
Executive will be fine.
Okay, that's good.
Is there anything in mind?
Pardon me?
Okay.
Okay, let's have approval of the minutes from May 14.
Two things.
Yep.
Two little typos.
Yeah.
In staff, no, yes, staff report, under principals' report, Tricia reported on attending cohort, is that correct?
Cohort.
Is it cohort?
H O R T.
O R T.
C O R T.
And if that's correct.
H O R T.
And then page three, IT coordinators' report, second paragraph, Governor La, first of all, that's spelled wrong, Governor LaPage, that's spelled wrong, has given.
Yep.
Just fix those. And then I will-
Where was that one?
Top of page two.
Page three.
Page three.
IT coordinators.
Oh yeah, I see it.
Lee Page and-
Lee Page.
And given, has given.
Okay, so at that point-
With those corrections, I will accept the minutes as written.
I knew you'd sign that.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded, that we accept the minutes as amended. Any more discussion? All those in favor? So moved. Any comments from the public? You were just raising your hand, or you were scratching your ear?
Okay.
Okay. Okay, then, let's go on to communication and correspondence.
I would like to present the school committee with a thank you note from Mr. Cammery for receipt of the scholarship. The Holsworth Scholarship, I believe it is. Yep. Right here, very good. And that is all I have.
Okay. Let's move on then to staff reports, beginning with the superintendent's report.
Okay. Ian, hit your packet. I hope, I hope, I hope you received a document that looks like this.
Mm-hmm.
And I would urge, strongly encourage, what other expletives can I come up with? It's my understanding that Trish is leaving us shortly. You have Kevin as a relatively new school board member. I would strongly, strongly urge, to the degree that you can attend the main school management leadership conference in October, that, see if we can get two to three people who would be able to attend that. I think leadership at the school board level over the last few years, as you are very well aware, has changed greatly in terms of vision and strategic planning. And I think this would give an opportunity to see how other people are managing it and just participate in leadership at a new level. So that's just the-
We always have, usually, two people from our board that attend that. Mary attends at almost every year.
That's great.
Jeanette's gone before, Kevin's gone, so.
Good. So that's something for you to keep, in October, May 4th.
We'll be getting a-
A full bulletin.
Well, we'll be getting something that will give us a chance to sign up as delegates and alternates, correct?
That'd be great. Just a very brief update, we are in the collective bargaining process with the professional teachers, as well as the support staff. Professional staff is humming right along. I thank Kevin, and I thank Mary for their endurance, and their patience, and their contributions. It's been a very interesting experience, and I for one am glad that we were able to honor my request and have Roger Kelly present. I think it's made a really nice difference in the tenor and timber of the meeting. So that's where we are. We're still in process. I am cautiously optimistic that we will have a professional staff collective bargaining agreement signed before the end of the summer. I would like to hope that that happens with the support staff as well, but I'm not quite as, I'm optimistic with a small L, in terms of the support staff collective bargaining agreement. At this point, we have two staff vacancies yet to fill. We have the new position as library media specialist, and we have the new gifted and talented person. We have received one application for each of those positions. Trish and I talked a little about that earlier this evening. We're going to proceed with those interviews, and then keep our options open and continue with the posting on serving schools to see how the recruiting goes. But we have no other vacancies that we know of at this point. And the last thing that I have is Betsy's schedule. And from next Tuesday night through the morning of the 28th, I will be entertaining my family in Disneyland in Florida. I don't know how I did that. But I do have my own room. And I will be back briefly on the 28th, and as you know, the 30th is my last day. And what I can tell you is that I will be available through the months of July to help with any superintendent responsibilities that you may surface or that you may need. So I'd be glad to help out with that and that.
And that's about all I have for my superintendent's report tonight. Okay, now let's go on to the IT coordinators' report.
All right. Any MWA's are completed. The data's been posted on Infinite Campus, and I've also shared it with Kevin, so he can do his data manipulation he was talking about. I've been planning steps for the summertime to update and maintain our network infrastructure. Some serious server redeployments, looking at redesigning the entire website from the ground up to help align with our vision that we're working on, and also kind of streamline and make it more user-friendly. We've agreed to opt-in to the MLTI Apple Alternative Program option for the MacBook Airs that has been filed and submitted to the state. I went to a conference yesterday, was it? Yes. And they explained in more detail the opt-in requirements and procedures and options. They'll also be coming in to do a survey to deploy a new wireless network. I've also done some research and found some information about E-Rate funding that will cover things like the new firewall we're putting in place, that will filter kids when they're not here. So the E-Rate funding will potentially cover all, if not a percentage, of the firewall bill, possibly this networking bill, and some other little odds and ends that I can dig up, so we can save some money there. The previous MLTI deployment, that is currently in the seventh and eighth grades' hands right now, after I've been crunching some numbers, I figured out that approximate, I figured out how to put a laptop in each one of the sixth graders' hands, put a laptop cart like we have in the library here, in the fifth grade, and in the soon-to-be multi-age fourth and fifth grade, and in the fourth grade. Also, I'll be using those laptops to replace the old computers that are in K through three, that are pretty much useless now. They don't do much of anything. And I'll also be replacing all of these. So with approximately 150 devices, I'll be deploying those across the board, and it will also allow the staff to maintain their own devices. The old iBook G4s, those are to be sold to the public. The question is, how much? In the past, I believe it was 25-ish, and at their current state, they aren't, they function and they work as a word processor, and they can go online, and they can do basic stuff, but there are limitations to them. So I don't see, if I can do it quick, I don't see them being worth much more than-
Than the $25?
Yeah, perhaps.
One year, we sold them for 50.
Yeah. How about I do some more research on that?
Okay.
Come back with a solid number, see what, you know, is happening on eBay, and get a, you know, a good number that's going to be affordable to the people and beneficial to us as well. So I'll come back with a number on that. So, my next question is with this retirement incentive program. The two retirees have come to me requesting that they keep their device. They've been working here for a long time, and their life's work is on those machines. Those devices, we are buying them for $47 apiece. So I'm requesting that they maintain possession of those devices, and they give us, there's a policy in the DOA that says we can't sell them the device for six months, but we can accept a-
Donation?
Not donation, not-
Attribution?
Not down payment, but a-
Deposit.
Deposit, thank you. Couldn't think of that word last time either. We could accept a deposit of the $47 and invoice them in six months. That way, they can keep their device, and we won't have to worry about, you know, trying to move their precious, you know, life's work to something else.
Does somebody want to make a motion on that, that we allow Mrs. Reeves and Mr. Cashes to put a deposit on their current laptops that they're using now, that they have all their work on? So moved.
I'll second it.
What was the cost going to be? $50?
$47.
No, 40, well, I heard the 47, but I thought that was an iffy thing.
That's a flat number.
That's it? Okay.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you.
All right. And I believe that is all I have.
Okay. Joy, want to give us a verbal update?
Yes, I'm sorry, I don't have a written report, but I've been pretty much in the conference room, attending two IEP meetings at the end of the year wrap-up. So we've been doing, participating in actually a couple of new identifications of special ed students, a couple of discharges, and transition meetings. And we have nine students attending summer school, oh, excuse me, 11 students attending summer school.
ESY.
ESY, Extended School Years, and everything that Trish said in her report, kindergarten step-up day, and so really, that's been consuming my time at the end of the year wrap-up. So is, do you have any questions about special ed?
Transition's going well for the kids that are moving on to high school?
Yes, yes. Those meetings went well, they, you know, they had a visit, and the high school came here. I think I reported that in the last, I think, the high school came here and they had meetings. So far, everyone's really excited about moving on. And I think that's about it.
Anybody have any other questions for Joy?
Nope. The incoming kindergarten was, they had a few special ed things going on there. They're still-
Yes, we're preparing for two, so far, we have some other students who will participate in speech services, and actually will participate in a summer, a little once-a-week preschool program for them.
Orientation to school.
Pardon?
Orientation to school.
Orientation to school. We called several of the students, parents of incoming preschoolers, and we're waiting to hear. We have at least two. But we have two identified special ed students coming in, one of whom has a lot of needs, as you know. So we've been preparing all year for that. So we've had several meetings, and we've been purchasing equipment and preparing the staff. We've had internal meetings and had meetings with the parent, and of course, the preschool, descending preschool. So those are going well, and will be very well-prepared for the students coming in.
Good. Any other questions for Joy? Okay, Carleen to report?
Carleen has submitted her report, and I just want to bring your attention to the fact that there are still two more warrants which will need to be signed, and the board pays for teachers and support staff over the, that need to be deduced and deducted from your remaining balances. And she will definitely be present in the July session to talk with you about where we, where we are.
And facilities report.
Very brief this evening. You see the report in front of you. I mentioned last month that I am doing a feasibility study on converting part of our heating system to biomass. I did meet with Rick Ellie from P&amp;E Plumbing, and Luke Senical. They came in, we looked at the system, looked at information contained on the blueprints, and I am waiting to hear back from him with the cost analysis of the project. The other things that we are gearing up for this last week of school is the field day, family picnic, graduation, and the dance, all which are very busy events for us. Also, on Saturday is our annual town meeting. Pretty much put out an email to the staff today for summer maintenance requests, and getting geared up for our summer projects. And that is about it.
And you met with your long-term planning committee at 5:30?
Yes, we did.
Okay. Any other questions for Andy?
No? Let's go on then to principals' report.
Okay.
Oh dear.
[laughing].
Save the best for last.
Or at least the longest.
Oh dear.
She gets the lamb.
Remember, the chairs are hot here.
Now, Jeanette, with a smile, I tell you, there's nothing like a great chaos that the last school weeks bring.
I know.
Okay? But with it comes amazing things. So in my report, I've spoken about the career day that the eighth day attend, the eighth graders attend. And I have to tell you, again, I am stunned by the hard work and accommodations that get made for our students. But it is like nothing, when I explain this to, nothing like anybody else does. Explained this with Tracy Scully and Kami Davis the other night at PTG to a lot of parents who do not yet have kids at this age group. And they were amazed. Kids got taken to Portland, to Dover, to the airport in Sanford. They got to be DJs, they got to be airline, airplane pilots, they got to be with a police officer, even a dog training. So the realm of choice, the kids always get to give us three choices, and the teachers do all they can to match up a hands-on learning experience for these students.
They have a lawyer in training as well.
Yes. I mean, just amazing, the kids just loved it. So that was really, really special. And again, it is a benefit that a small class, you know, a small school can do. You cannot make this provision happen for 300 students, but you can for 30-something, and we did. A huge success. The smiles, very, very few kids had an experience that they didn't want to repeat. Some learn what they don't want to do for a career this way. "I thought it would be this, and it was that, and no, thank you." The kindergarten step-up day was new, it was fabulous. We had the bus here, the kids got to go around the little triangle here to have a bus ride experience, parents got to meet the PTG members. A couple of them came here and talked about what they offer for opportunities for kids. Parents got a chance to ask questions that they didn't think of earlier. Kids got to be welcomed into the kindergarten room by the pros, who are now almost first graders, and show them how it works. They were also escorted and given a tour of the school by seventh graders, because next year, those incoming kindergarteners will be the youngest, and the seventh graders will be our, eighth graders are our oldest. So we had them give a tour of the school, just, it was just good stuff. And I let PTG know, because that was an idea that came out of some of the parents at the PTG, I let them know how important their contribution was to some of the improvements we've made here this year. Certainly, we were very proud of two of our Acton Odyssey and Mind teams that went out to Michigan. One of the parents actually created a private Facebook page, where you only could be invited to, but that allowed us to watch the trip as it went on, kept parents left back home up to date for those that went, so that was great. A quick update, there's just no way I can summarize everything that the PTG has done this year, but one of the things we started in January, a very coordinated effort, is the backpack program. This sends six backpacks home on the weekends to kids who would otherwise possibly not be well-fed. Very huge success. Right now, about $1,000 of the PTG's money has been spent. Now, that does not include other donations that are coming from elsewhere, but that $1,000 is actually from the teachers, from the staff, helping by sending in their $2 for Jeans Day every Friday. So again, real group effort, real community effort to make this happen. I would love to see outside-school sponsors help us somehow take this on in a bigger endeavor next year. I know we don't have a large community of businesses to tap into and things, but I just feel like there's got to be more that we can be doing to get help from outside sources. Because eventually, we just, you know, I can't let, can't let the teachers wear jeans every day, you know, but in reality, it needs to be more community effort, not just school-based. But this has been off to a great start. Now, my big excitement, the new learning and the future of where we're going with education. I gave you a copy of proposal for services, and it's just the tip of the iceberg. Teachers attended some observations throughout May, April and May, and then went to two days of training. And I say teachers, we've got about 14 of us trained in the two days so far, to the first level of the type of learning that has to happen for the teachers and educators in this building, to truly teach and help students learn the standards. Everybody's talking about the Common Core standards. Standards-based, performance-based learning is not a fad, it is a way school is changing, which means those of us which were trained to teach under a different style need to be retrained. The staff is so excited about this training, that all those that got to attend in May came back saying, when, how, what's next, what are we doing? So, I have been working with RISK, Reinventing Schools Coalition, which actually started out of a program in Alaska. John Davis, who is the nearby superintendent of Massabesic, is one of those people who started it in Alaska.
Yeah.
So we've got RISK, working with our school, this is the preliminary contract, paid for through grant money only, no local funds.
Rural schools.
Rural schools. So, we have a day this week, that their representative's coming to do an initial school visit. We have a day set aside already in August for one of the teacher workshop days back to school, where he will come and do a building site training. And then I am working with not only the RISK people, but also Sanford. I have a meeting with Janes Goldsberry on June 27th, and I'm also working with Massabesic because they've been trained and in this program, in this change, for five years now. They've been doing it longer. So both of those two schools have pledged any and all support possible to help us help our teachers.
I can't tell you how excited the teachers were when they came back from those visits. They were psyched. They were ready to go.
Yep. So they're already testing the water, trying out some of the new learning they had, and looking forward to more. I was on a conference call this afternoon with one of the coordinators for the Reinventing Schools Coalition, Kim. She's actually based out of Arkansas. And so we worked on the phone and with Google Docs, love live Google Docs, so I could see what she was proposing on my computer screen. The next steps over the next probably 18 to 24 months, the breakdown of costs, and I'll be working with Massabesic and Sanford for when we are offering a training, or they are offering a training, and we will offer an exchange of, well, you only have three people that need that, while I'm having a full training, send your three my way, you know, maybe in the middle of school year, there's enough new teachers that need the next level. So one of the three school districts will be holding a particular training, it'll be open to all three districts. So a real sharing of resources here. The original contract proposal that they sent to me last week had me starting off at spending $20,000. After I got done panicking, I asked them to, let's break it down to smaller steps, more doable, and let me get started, and then we can break out the cost along the way and see where else we can share resources. So this new proposal is for less than $9,000. And that'll get us started, and allow, like I said, the shared resources between Massabesic and Sanford and us, so that we can many times pay a per-person, per-training-day fee, and send a group of our teachers to Sanford for the next set of training.
And there's still enough funding in the rural schools to be able to encumber it, write the contract, and pay it off.
Yeah. So I'm really excited. This is huge new learning for a lot of veteran staff, and they're so excited.
But what an exciting first step in your strategic plan. Wow.
It's all going to tie in together. It's necessary learning. And, you know, the cohort is another piece of that, that's the grassroots, these, most people in the cohort are also contracting with RISK at some point in some time, some a little bit, some a lot more, depending on their funding ability. But the cohort is also a place where the standards are being put into an essential skills curriculum style for teachers to use in lessons. And so even in the last couple of days, I got a list probably about a dozen long of essential skills and standards for science, and another dozen or 14 for social studies. So our teachers are not going to be trying to create the curriculum from the Common Core standards by themselves in isolation. Again, it's a group effort. The cohort membership is about $2,000 for the year, and so that'll be starting in July. And again, that's going to come out of the grant money, so no local funds there. But it'll allow for access to, again, this huge group of schools, every month, the group is growing, over 30 schools now, districts, involved in the cohort. And again, it's how Maine is handling adapting the Common Core standards into our classrooms.
Good.
So, the third step, we'll be looking at how do we do the reporting out. Currently, Acton, as well as many, many schools in Maine, uses Infinite Campus for reporting out data. There will be a discussion that needs to be had sometime next year, is that going to continue to work for us? Or is another program such as Educate, another program, going to better match reporting out standard-based learning, the performing, from progress reports, communicating with parents, tracking students from one year to the next, as to whether they met a standard or whether they still need to work on it the following year? I'm not prepared at this point to know what was best yet for Acton, so we have held off in making that commitment, both verbally as well as financially, but it is something that's going to have to come up in discussion as we move forward with our strategic plan, what is in the best interest of our needs. What is in the best interest of our needs and how we report to parents.
A few questions.
Absolutely.
The rural schools grant we were using for the vision. So we have enough to finish the vision and do this.
Yes.
How much is in that?
Over twenty-five thousand.
Twenty-five thousand.
And we got that a year ago?
Yeah.
And we paid that more than how much?
All right.
Paid her a total of, she was paid out of it, probably, I think, somewhere around five thousand. So when you're talking about all the different schools that are involved in this, like thirty schools, is what they're sharing actually like lesson plans for the teachers in those areas? Sample lesson?
Sample and assessments. Like if you took a topic in English Language Arts and said, the standard is that students will be able to produce a certain written assignment. You could also look at the standard for social studies, and it says that the students will be able to write an argument for or against a certain topic. You could see how you could take those two standards, and a teacher has then created a single assessment, cross-integrating the two subjects, and the single assessment, and how they measured it. And our teachers will, with the cohort membership, will also be able to test them out, join groups that are formulating these things, be a part of the discussion, offer their own insight. If we purchase Educate, and again, I'm not sure we're going to or should, but something like that would also allow our teachers to upload their assessments and ideas and lesson plans. So it's a real sharing. Yep. There's no hiding, mine's better than yours, that I don't want you to know what I'm doing. It's everybody. And we're talking Gray New Gloucester, we're talking RSU eighteen, you know, real widespread. Some of these meetings, you know, people are up in the county area. And so they, you know, cyber Skype. They can't get to the meetings.
My question goes to the Common Core. I think it's coming down to us, what we have to do for our kids. And we will not have a decision on how to do our curriculum or anything because we have to do what they say. We're not going to be able to even have a voice.
The standard, you won't have a voice in. How you meet the standard, the resources that you put behind meeting the standard is absolutely their choice. Absolutely.
But you know, I go back to when I went to school, and somehow I learned. And all that learning got me to where I am, and I'm an intellect. So I don't understand why we throw out all the old way of learning.
I don't think anybody's throwing out the old.
No, it already has been thrown out. When I saw everyday math, I realized the kids were going to be screwed with math. Math could be so easy, and they made it very difficult. So I don't know what this new system is going to do to the children. Because there wasn't really much bad with the old system.
It isn't a system, though, Mary. You need to understand that what it is, is what do you have to know and be able to do to successfully complete the fourth grade? That's the standard. English, math, science, social studies, art, music, phys ed at some point? How you do that is a matter of individual choice. It reflects on the teacher's capabilities, the interest and ability level of the kids. I mean, it is so exciting to see the diversity that can exist in meeting the standard. It isn't like we're going to do everyday math, and here's the book, have fun. It's the standard behind it. And what are you going to do to teach that standard? Is it everyday math? Maybe it's a five-step math program? Who knows? But that collaborative effort and the ability to work with other people to gain resources and gain knowledge about how to be effective with kids is just so essential and so exciting.
I really encourage all school board members, if you're available on August twenty-eighth, to come to that workshop day.
It is exciting.
That is where a lot of that understanding can happen. The other piece that is different is it's not about what the teacher taught. The question is, what did the student learn? And so if you take a room full of fifteen or twenty or thirty kids and ask them, why are you doing that? And what have you learned? And how do you know you understand it? It can't be because the teacher said. The student then has to be able to say, I'm learning this so I can do that next step, or so I can use it in this area. And they know why. They will know our vision and mission. They will know how their learning today is impacting them. But they also will be able to express what they learned instead of, well, teacher said I had to do it, I did it, and it has no meaning to them. So that's where some of the change in the classroom is going to be seen. And again, I really encourage, I know it's not always easy and it's not always convenient, but, you know, as these changes take place, I encourage visitation. Come to the school. Come with us to see another school doing it. You know, that open concept of open the door and see what the learning is is going to be so essential to the success. It's not going to be a mystery. It should be absolutely evident that kids are learning.
But, you know, when you have parent-teacher conferences, it's no longer parent-teacher. It's parent with their child. And so the teacher doesn't say a word, and the child talks. And you're like, okay, I see my child every day. I want to know what the teacher says my kid, you know, can do. And I don't see that happening. I mean, things are just so different. And I don't know if it's good. I don't know.
I wouldn't make an assumption about how that's going to transform itself. I mean, you know, we had an opportunity to spend some time in one of the districts that has been doing this for five years. Absolutely, the parent-teacher conferences are parent, teacher, and child. It isn't just, okay, John, tell us what you know and are able to do in math. Here are the Common Core standards. Here's how he does it.
I just want people in my school to question everything. I don't want them to accept things from the state or federal government as the Bible. I want them to question, why are you doing it? Is it really best for the kids? And, you know, if I don't see an improvement in scores or whatever, you know, that's not going to mean anything. Well, we are learning, and so we told you we're learning. No, I want to know my kids are learning. I mean, did you see that note? I hate to say it, but, and I won't say who it was from. But that's a twelfth grader, and that's the way my two sons write. It's, the penmanship is terrible. So whatever happened there? I mean, look at twelfth graders and their writing. I mean, so you throw that out the door because now they type? I don't think so. You know, so I'm wondering, from seeing children going through the system, I've had six of them now, and it's just gotten worse and worse. And if it now tends to get better and better, I'll be happy. But I have seen it going downhill.
You have not seen what we're seeing now as evidence. I agree that questioning has to happen. I don't think we're taking things spoon-fed from the federal government or the state. The standards will allow kids who do a lot of transitioning between one school and another to have the same expectation that diplomas will actually mean the same thing in different schools. And right now, they do not.
I know, but when you look, when you look at statistics, I heard there's only one percent of kids who actually move around. No.
Well, can I just add something? That it is a state-led initiative, and that consortium, Smarter Balance, all of those consortiums are comprised of teachers and parents. This isn't the federal government or the state government.
No, the Common Core is. And what happened is, the Maine School Board Association, they would not vote for it or against it because there were no regulations yet. When they went and they voted it in an emergency bill, okay? So the state legislature goes, sure, we have to, because otherwise we lose federal money. So they voted for it. The Maine school boards that recognize, you know, school committees, they couldn't vote for or against it because they knew the regulations weren't written yet. And I just want to let you know, we don't know who's writing these regulations. It's, you got to be careful. Just letting you know.
I agree.
How do you adapt?
It's kind of one of those cases, you have to read the bills and sign the bill to read, know what's in it.
Yeah.
I think that's one of the situations.
But there was nothing in it yet.
That's what I'm getting at. We've been in that situation before. We're currently in that.
Right.
And that would be my concern is, you know,
So yes, it is.
Not having everything done.
And it's the Common Core. That's what they voted for. I don't know if it's a good idea. Of course, it'll take years.
It'll take.
Just let me play a little bit of history with you, my dear Mrs. Stanton. Knowing that you grew up in New York State, what did you have to pass to get your high school diploma?
The Regents.
Absolutely.
Yes. I passed with nineties. There was no problem doing Regents.
That's what we're talking about.
And they just threw that because of Common Core out the door. And New York no longer has Regents after all these years?
But the Regents.
What was wrong with that?
The Regents modality is what formed the impetus for people to look at, what do I need to be able to do to be successful? That's all.
We'll see.
Again, I absolutely welcome the questioning, but you also have to commit and see. You have to be a part of it so that we can continue to have this conversation about what's working, what's not. It is not saying that everything that we've been doing is not working. It's trying to really level the playing field and unify the expectations beyond Acton's borders.
But I appreciate your, I appreciate your caution.
I'm excited to have that kind of excitement amongst the teachers, that they want to really communicate, even amongst each other, the unifying within the teams to look at, what do we have in common? What can we agree on? Even classroom behavior expectations, the cross-grade expectation conversation, how to behave in the hallway, how do we behave in the cafeteria? This has increased the teacher-to-teacher conversation about owning students' behavior, not just for the one in front of you, but the entire group of kids that you might come in contact with. It's been a very positive discussion for the teams of teachers to work as team instead of individuals, which has always been a challenge here.
A lot of these things are just plain common sense. I mean, it just seems to grow into this monster of trying to get a grasp on something that it's been here all along, you know?
A lot of what the teacher's doing already aligns with these standards, there's no doubt. But there's going to be a universal way of measuring them that we're going to work on, you know, amongst ourselves. There's going to be a way of communicating with other school systems, you know, to really ensure that we're measuring accurately and fairly and completely.
And it is a work in progress.
And that's where the cohort really is helpful as far as the shared grassroots effort, the questioning, the revamping, the feedback. It's definitely a work in progress. But I feel it's really important for such a small school district like us to stop working alone, to get feedback and insight, to see how others are doing it. Does that mean they're doing it better than us? No. But if you never look outside your own classroom, you don't know what else is going on. We've got to have that worldview of what's going on with education as well as, you know, where kids are headed after education. And it's just, we can't isolate ourselves. We may do it better than others, but we don't know that if we don't know what others are doing.
Any other questions, Patricia? You got your upcoming events. All set with your report?
I am.
She's reported it out?
I have.
Okay.
I got to just ask one, the same question, I guess. All this that you're planning to do and all, this all is coming out of that and also inclusive with the vision grant funds.
Yep. Work with Mary Jane, she's coming down one more time on Tuesday. I have not asked for any monies to come out of local funds at all.
We have Title II funds that are available. That'll be available next year, and we will be using the rural schools.
But somewhere, the money came from somebody.
She means the taxpayers.
Taxpayers, that?
Somewhere.
That I'm not in charge of. You are correcting.
I know.
Now, when I can't take advantage of it.
And all the funds, it all comes from the taxpayer.
Yes.
You got a mirror? Have you got a mirror?
Yeah.
All set? Can I have a motion to accept all staff reports, please?
I'll make a motion to accept all the reports.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Okay, how about committees?
I guess that's six forty, I already wrote it. Already got it.
Sorry about that.
Mr. Perks is here, anyway. Okay, how about committees, standing committees? Policy committee has three policies inside your packet. Homeschool policy, first reading, foreign exchange student policy, and the dress code policy, we don't have in our packet, really?
No.
Because that's going to be tabled temporarily.
The school volunteers.
The volunteers.
So homeschooling is basically allowing students who are homeschooled with permission from the Department of Education, that's who includes in a homeschool curriculum, their homeschool prospectus, is the conditions under which they can participate in public school programming. It's for the.
So, first readings tonight are homeschool?
Yep.
And volunteers?
Nope. This is second.
It's a second reading?
Foreign exchange.
Foreign exchange.
I learned a lot about foreign exchange.
What's the, what's the, what's the number on the volunteers?
The volunteer is IJOC.
Fund number nine on the agenda?
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Okay. So are there any questions about IHBGA?
I'll accept a motion to accept homeschool policy, IHBGA for a first reading.
I'll make a motion to accept IHBGA homeschooling first reading.
I'll second it.
Any discussion on that one? All those in favor? Okay, and what's foreign exchange?
I don't know if we had to vote on that, the first reading.
Yeah, we do.
Yeah?
On the foreign exchange, I learned a lot about this. And I learned a lot about it mostly because my daughter's family lives in Saco, and the oldest one's going to Thornton Gaddy, which has foreign exchange students. The only foreign exchange students, ninety-nine percent of the time that you will have are parents who are sponsoring foreign exchange students. And they would come to your school, no, they would go to a high school program because it really is limited by age. They would go to a high school program under the same circumstances as an Acton student would go to a high school program. What you will notice in here is that we have limited the number of foreign exchange students to two so that we're able to plan public school tuition for them. And they are allowed to stay for a one-year duration. And I talked with Trish about this. This will be in the student handbook when it's published in the fall so that people will know. And hopefully, you know, there'll be people listening tonight that if they have a plan on a foreign exchange student, that they need to get in touch with us ASAP because we're going to limit it to.
Is there, I hadn't thought about this when we were looking at this earlier. But is, does it happen? And I could be wrong in this one. But for me, this is foreign exchange. Are there times when parents will, families will accept a foreign exchange, but we're not sending anybody out? See, for me, part of the value added is, it's an exchange, hence the foreign exchange program. But I think sometimes I've heard of places where we accept foreign students, there's no exchange involved.
I think you're right.
And for me.
And you should be foreign students.
Correct. And I think for me, like from a policy standpoint, I believe in the quid pro quo. If, in a way, I think, and I'm thinking out loud, I'm happy to extend, you know, what we have to offer to foreign students. But part of the whole point of the exchange program is because one of our students is getting the opportunity of a cultural.
That is not part of the policy.
And, which seems odd to me because the policy, and it hit me before, is it's the foreign exchange policy, which is different than accepting foreign students.
Why don't we change it?
Policy.
Yeah, change.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, now that you say.
Yeah, right.
Why don't we change it to accepting foreign students?
Or just.
Or, I'm just wondering, like, the community should accept foreign exchange students who meet the established guise of admission to schools that are part of an exchange with students in our district. You can't.
You can't go there.
No, you can't make somebody, you can't send somebody away if they don't want to go.
Well, no, 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 but it's the reverse, in the sense of if we have a student who goes. Like when I was, for example, when I was an exchange student, I wanted to go. In order to go, we might, we had to agree to accept.
Right.
Because we had to agree to an exchange.
And what, this is not an exchange, truthfully.
More, more people will accept, but they won't necessarily send.
Right.
So it's not an exchange.
All right, well, this could go back to the policy subcommittee.
So I get it, I get it.
Back to the policy subcommittee to rewrite it.
To rewrite it or change the title?
You could just probably say foreign.
Well, would it still go under JFABB?
If you change the title, you're going to have to rewrite parts of the policy anyway.
That's the purpose of a first read, right?
Right.
Okay, to be continued.
Sorry to throw a wrench in the works, I'm just like, wait a second, where's the exchange?
Right, I see what you're saying now.
And I don't, it's not like I'm willing to fall on that sword.
So let's table, can I have a motion to table the foreign exchange student policy, JFABB, until the policy committee has time to take another look at it and revamp it to suit our needs here?
Yep. I make a motion that we table foreign exchange students, JFABB.
I'll second that.
Okay.
And I apologize, I didn't catch that the last time.
Further discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. You all are on the policy committee, right?
Uh-huh.
Yeah.
That's why I apologize, it didn't hit me the last time, we talked about it.
But that's, that's what it's all, they all refer to it as everywhere. I never heard them say foreign students. Have you?
Accepting foreign students.
Have you ever heard of foreign students?
Well, no, and from my experience, I always, my original understanding was, it's exchanges.
Yes, that's what it's supposed to be.
But I'm not sure when it morphed away to foreign, yeah, and if that's, if that's something we're interested in, then I think there's, there is value in that, but I'm talking about more.
I think a lot of times in Sanford, when I was at the high school, teaching at the high school, we had foreign students.
Yes.
That were there, they were just being hosted as guests by families.
Fred's family did that.
They, they weren't, nobody was going in their place, but they were just coming to study in the United States.
But my question comes back to, who incurs the cost of that student to the district?
To what district? To our district.
The family does.
If we have, if we have a family in Acton who hosts a foreign student, because they want to come and learn in this country for a year, usually it's a year, then we treat that child as we would treat any other child in our district. In other words, if they go to Sanford High, we pay their tuition. That's why we had some place in hand that we would limit it to two per year.
What if we had a student in Saco want to come to our district? I'm just theoretical.
They're not foreign enough.
No, I'm not talking about, I'm not, I'm not.
That's a different kettle of fish.
It's a different visa.
They have a superintendent's agreement.
I totally understand, but if we had a student in New Hampshire who lived in Wolfboro, who wanted to come to Acton, what would happen?
Do they want to come to school here?
Yeah, would they have to pay tuition?
Yes.
So why wouldn't a foreign exchange student have to pay tuition? When somebody 20 miles away would have to pay tuition.
Because of how the visa laws are written. If you are in a V1 visa, you are treated as an American student. If you're a V2 visa, which is what the residents are at Thornton Academy, then the sending operation, the sending facility, the sending corporation pays all your expenses.
But somebody from Mills, New Hampshire wouldn't be considered an American student?
Well, that's what I'm saying.
But they, who is their host family? Do they move and live with somebody else? Then we're talking guardianship. If they still live in New Hampshire, then it's not the same as being a host family in Acton, taking care of them.
Good point.
Look, wouldn't that come under, like, the same thing now? Some of the students that still wanted to go to Noble and whatnot, San 57, we had that hardship clause, superintendent's agreement, to say, yes, we will allow them to come here. And we absorb the cost. Right, we still have that.
But there are certain guidelines for that, too.
Right.
You can't just go there because you want to.
Right, you have to have an absolute reason why.
And at the high school level, it has to be that there is a course of study that is offered, that's not available at the.
Right.
That's understandable, and that's, but we're not going to be paying any more than what we would pay for our tuition students.
No, no.
I think, I understand what Kevin's saying, and I agree, is why should the taxpayer, myself, i.e. most everybody here, incur the cost?
Because that's the way the visa laws are written. The federal government says.
Well, then, the federal government should be paying for it.
If we had our own high school here, like Sanford, if you, it would just be going, you'd just be absorbing it, you wouldn't notice the difference of one more. It's because we tuitioned them out, that we count the numbers. Otherwise, you wouldn't know whether there's 30 or 31 kids in that class.
Because if a kid comes from a foreign country and stays with a family in Sanford, who would be going to the same classes as a kid that was staying in Acton, the Sanford taxpayers are paying for that kid's education, because they support the Acton schools. We tuition our kids there, our money helps pay the cost of educating them in Sanford. So it's no different than any other kid.
So this is my ignorance, so then I don't understand. And again, for me, I'm interested in just the scrutiny, because there just seems to be some differences here, and I think, but I like the idea of having foreign students in schools as culturally a benefit to students, so I'm keen on that. But if there's, are there laws that basically mandate that we, that you have to accept students from foreign countries?
At the discretion of, at the discretion and upon investigation of the superintendent, you can, you may accept foreign students.
So that's where I'm getting, so when you were saying before, we don't have a choice because it's the way the visas are written.
If the visa is approved and the student is here.
Approved by whom?
By the federal government and the student's allowed to come, then we have very little say on our ability to educate that student.
So basically, a family does accept a student from another country with a visa.
A V1 visa.
We don't have a choice.
That's correct.
And why do we need a policy?
That student belongs in that family for the year.
Well, that makes sense to me.
Because you wanted a policy.
We have a choice.
Because.
I want a limit.
And this is where my ignorance is.
I want a limit.
She wanted a limit on the number and how long they could be here, and you are allowed to specify that.
So, but that, so again, I'm still confused during the sense of, if the law says, if the family's willing to take a foreign student, why then do you get to choose two or three? If five families want to do it.
Because we can.
It's only the visa that's approved to allow the student to come. If the student comes and meets the criteria for going to high school, then you, as a board, have said, A, we're limiting it to two, and B, we're limiting it to one year.
Now, this is what happened when we went into budget. Carleen reported there were four foreign exchange, and I went $40,000. We can't just take, you know, all these kids, that's $40,000.
I get that, I'm hearing two messages, though, and I want to understand how this works, because I think there's money implied. I think culturally, this is good, but again, this is my ignorance, I want to understand how it works. I'm hearing two things. One, we have to because of visas, or two, we have the discretion.
When you read the law, it comes in that if a student comes in on a visa, on a student visa, and they're staying in that town, that town has to incur the cost of education.
I get that.
Usually, it's a high school student, right?
Yeah.
With us, because we are standalone with a high school contract, we can limit the amount of kids. We have to limit, otherwise we'll be broke.
I get that.
And the duration.
So, but, so if I'm understanding this correctly, because this is, this is about logic, if we can limit, then for us, the visas don't matter. If we have the discretion to limit, we can say zero, we can say one, because what I'm hearing before is, we can't say one or two or zero because of the visas. If I'm understanding correctly, I just want to know what the, to do it. I'm hearing, because I'm hearing conflicting things. We have to, or we have the discretion. Which one is it?
But at this local level, we can limit.
What's that mean? Is zero, one, two?
We put two.
We put two.
Could we put, could we put zero?
Yeah, probably, yeah.
I don't know.
That student has the right.
That's my question.
I don't know.
Well, it's not, we don't have to go there, because they have the permission to come in the country.
It can be limited to 30 days.
But we can limit.
I mean.
In one year.
It's like, you know, can you, can you limit the number of children that?
We should.
For some, for some reason, move into guardianship with their grandparents for a year or two years in this community?
No.
You can't limit those, because those people have guardianship for that year. If you have a foreign student in your family, you have guardianship for that year. I don't really see what the difference is myself. It seems to me if, and the other thing is that I don't think we're going to have very many of these anyway. I think we're kind of tossing this around with, you know, spending a lot of time on. I don't think, I think there's a very small possibility that we're going to be having a lot of foreign exchange students, or foreign students living in Acton, going to high school for a year.
All we have to do is change the word. I think we're all set with the one year and two. Huh? Well, I know, but what I'm saying is that they have the right to come in because of the visa. We have the right to say a limit and how, and how long.
Well, I wanted it in the community that it's not everyone who wants to take a foreign student can just come here and we're going to pay for everyone's high school education. I'm not as a taxpayer, so I want it to limit it. So call me a bad person, but I'm trying to look out for the taxpayers. I don't think we could just, you know, we could have a lot of nice families that want to take foreign students, and we do have that. We've had it happening. I know this one family that every year it seems they take foreign students, which is very nice for them. They might like the cultural whatever to their own kids, but, you know.
But it seems we can.
We can't keep taking kids. We can't, like, have eight kids and then $80,000. See, I go $10,000 per kid, so I worry about that end of it, I guess.
But this will take care of it. We just need to fine-tune it a little bit.
Well, I'll toss out something else to us here, too. I'll toss out another thing. I would suggest that this might be something that we might be able to put on the bargaining table with the Sanford School Department when we meet together as joint boards, that we might ask them about absorbing the costs of any exchange students that come to go to Sanford High.
Like those get waived.
But, you know, if their tuition fee could be waived, that's, that's.
Or the Sanford will absorb that cost.
Yeah.
Well, we have nine years to write a new contract.
Yeah, but we can make, we can, that would be, I think that would be a good conversation to come up with.
It's not unreasonable.
Not like that.
With Sanford, when we meet together with them as a board, and certainly, I mean, there's no real rush on it right now until we have an issue where we're having problems, which I find it hard to think that's going to happen to us here in Acton, but.
Yeah, for me, the bigger issue was just things not jiving. Title, content, that's not a big deal. I think it's easy to fix. But it seems to me sometimes we have to develop policies that are grounded to a certain extent in law.
And we do.
Correct, but like, in this case, it's not clear to what extent the law binds us. So again, so the two things not jiving for me is, we have to, but we don't. And I'm not comfortable developing a policy when that's not clear to me.
No, it's more or less, if they take a foreign, a foreign student and they reside in a town, the town has to pay. But the town can limit the amount.
And that's fuzzy.
Right.
That's fuzzy, so I don't like fuzz, I like clarity.
Well, anyway, we tabled that. Did we vote on it?
No. I think we got halfway.
Yes, we tabled on, we voted on the table.
Yes, it's all done. I made the motion, Kevin seconded, 5-0.
I just, I just want to say, I don't see school volunteers that we ever discussed this before as a first reading.
No, I don't recall that either.
So that's really a first reading.
I mean, that's, it can't, right, I don't recall that anywhere, because I don't recall. I know we had talked somewhere, but there was nothing ever in writing like this.
No, so this is a first reading.
This brochure I knew we had.
So then, let us look at school volunteer policy, IJOC, to be accepted for a first reading.
Do you have anything for long-term planning?
We skipped over long-term planning.
No, only because we're on policies.
We're doing policies right now. IJOC, and I have a motion to accept that for a first reading.
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor? Okay, we all set with the policy committee now? Long-term planning committee.
Yes, Andy and I met, and we were looking at the building out back, the storage building,